So it's really a great delight to have our 3rd District Supervisor, John Hascheck, with us tonight. John is a man who listens to our issues and speaks on our behalf. For that, we are extremely grateful to you and really very fortunate. The 3rd District is comprised from Leightonville all the way up to Bell Springs Road to the north, Covelo and Willets and everything in between. John was elected last November and he was seated as our supervisor this past January. And with that, I will turn it over to John. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Thank you, Sherri.
This is mine.
All right. Yeah, I wanted to say thank you to everyone who helped make this possible, AAUW, The Grange, and certainly, you know, the people who were making individual efforts. It's really important for our community to have everyone out here and I really appreciate that. I appreciate my wife for putting up with everything for the last year or so and maybe longer. And, you know, I was gonna wear a tie this evening, but I remember Cindy Morninglight and she told me before one of the debates when I wore a tie, she goes, "This is Willets. You shouldn't be wearing a tie." And so in honor of Cindy, I'm not wearing a tie tonight. So, and we certainly miss her. So, I just wanted to give you a little update about what's going on and then we'll take questions and we'll have a conversation, if that's all right. But if we can have, you know, if there's differing opinions, just make sure we're all civil to each other. We know how to do that much better than they know how to do it on other levels. And so let's just be as civil as possible and hopefully we can get to everyone's questions or comments. And so I'll just start out with what we've done so far. You know, I sponsored a ban on GMO cannabis and that passed and the county is trying to write the ordinance to make sure that they get it correct. And until they can get it correct, we have a moratorium on GMO cannabis. And that was important because there was a Canadian corporation that was coming into Covelo that had this GMO cannabis model that didn't fall under our GMO ban. So we had to redo the GMO ban and in doing that, we're going to include everything to make sure it's updated to ban the latest technology that is GMO that the county's intent when they passed Measure H is upheld. All right? Let's see. And we have a ban on hemp right now, a moratorium, until we can get it right because there's a fear that the hemp production could impact cannabis production. And so we wanted to make sure we get it right and do it properly. And in all of this, you know, my attempt, like I said during my campaign, was to help the small farmer, to help them get into the legal permit system. And so that's why I've done some things like voted against the fee increases. And then we're looking right now, we had the ad hoc committee which I was on and we recommended quite a few things. A lot of it got accepted by the board and so sent off to staff and we're waiting for it to come back as legal language. And we also, there were some other things like increasing the size of grows, which I'm not in favor of, which was up to an acre, and also increase or allowing new grows in range land. And I'm also not in favor of that, but that's being put out there and it will come back to the board and I will be against that when it comes back. I've been working on career and technical education. I met with Michelle Hutchins at, who's the superintendent, the county superintendent at MCOE, you know, Mendocino County Office of Education. We've talked about what we can do in career and technical education. I've met with Senator McGuire just about that. And he also brought in the person who developed the Career and Technical Education Foundation for Sonoma County and they've got a real thriving program down there. And so his name was Tony Crabbe. We met and we talked about what we could be doing in Mendocino County and it's exciting because the senator wants to help, the county office of education wants to help. And then I'm also on this Workforce Alliance, which is dealing with real career and technical education, but on a limited scale. And so we're trying to get all those groups to start talking to each other and figuring out this strategic plan for it. Emergency preparedness, you know, I've been working on the Sherwood Road and emergency access routes there. And like last Monday, I went up on Sherwood Road with the head of the Department of Transportation. We had Cal Fire, we had Brook Trails represented, we had the deputy CEO from the county. And we supervisor, Jeredy was supposed to be there, but then at the last minute, he couldn't. So we went up there, we did the Willets Trail, which goes from North Brook up to Brook Trails. And it's that old walking road, which is a sewer easement at this point. And we also did the Furco Road, which goes from near the airport all the way down to the old GP plant. And so it's going through private property and there's another road that we actually got out and it was the hottest day of the year, I think, and we walked up to the airport and this other spur road. And we were checking those out to see what the viability is and creating real access routes along those places, what needs to be done. And Howard DeShiel, the Director of Transportation, was taking notes and saying, "Okay, we need to build a turnout here and we need to do this and that." And so it was very productive and he'll have his report out in a couple of weeks. Let's see. We're also working on the exclusive operating agreement for the county ambulance service and that's critical because the Brook Trails in Willets and Leightonville, Covelo are often, don't have enough ambulance service. And so that's putting people at risk and we're trying to get a new agreement, but these companies, you know, want to make money and it's a hard thing to do. So the county's working on that and hopefully we'll have an agreement soon. Let's see, as far as governance, let's see, because, you know, I talked about good governance in my campaign and certainly the supervisors giving themselves that raise last year of over, almost 40%. And I was against that. So, you know, I created those scholarships and that's been a real nice thing for me. And I think, you know, the three people who got them in Willets, Leightonville and Covelo, I think it'll certainly help them in their educational pursuits. And I did vote against an increase to the deputy DA. And that's, and that contract, because it was like 17% over the last two and a half years and it was a 7% raise per year and the county employees aren't getting that. And so I'm saying that until that happens, that I'm not gonna vote for those raises for those department heads. And since that time, no one, they haven't brought any other pay raises to the board. And it's been nice because right after that, someone, I was talking to a department head and they said, "Oh no, someone told me, you cannot bring it to the board because it will be, you know, scrutinized." And so, so that's what I'm trying to do. So as far as the environment, we did a resolution that I sponsored to protest the sonar testing out that the Navy was doing out, you know, the proposal is to do it off the coast of Mendocino County, Humboldt, all the way up to Washington State, where they're doing sonar testing and bombing. And so, so that passed unanimously at the board. We also did this resolution for Climate Action Advisory Group to advise the board. It got sent off and then brought back, but then there is some question about the, how it would look and the composition of it. And so it's just some technical things that we needed to work out. And then there is a proposal for, you know, a staff person at $110,000 and that would be through the Resource Conservation District. And I voted against that. And what passed in the budget was to help this group out with $7,500 a year to do all the technical things that they need to do and get the word out, to organize, just the basic organizing and help with transportation or whatever logistics are needed for the group. So I hope that that comes back to the board quickly and we can get a move on this important topic. And then, oh, I'm also on the North Coast Railroad Authority. And it's an interesting time because the proposal from, well, the bill that got passed and became law from Mike McGuire, Senator Mike McGuire, was to kind of disband the NCRRA and create this trail, the Great Redwood Trail. And so that's where we're heading with it. And it's been a great time because there's lots of potential to it. We went to a meeting last Saturday that Senator McGuire had in Yukaya and there was, the room was packed. And it's really, Willets could be the hub for it, for this trail that goes from Willets north all the way to Eureka. And so looking at the potential for, you know, restoring some of the environment along the Eel River Canyon and also providing job opportunities, income, you know, recreation for all of us, if we're able to get along that trail in 10 years or so. But that's, that's the potential there. And so I'm working on it through NCRRA, the North Coast Railroad Authority, and also as a county and Senator, or Supervisor McCowen and I are sponsoring an agenda item right now to, to have a, it's a resolution in support of the Great Redwood Trail. So, so hopefully we'll get that going. And then lastly, we have the grand jury report. And certainly if anyone's read the grand jury report, they have some items in there that, that are of interest. And they certainly, the title of it was, "Who Runs Mendocino County?" And saying that the CEO has taken a little too much responsibility and that, but the way I'm looking at it is there's some structural things that need to be done, such as, you know, the board gives a directive and then unless you follow up personally, that directive kind of sometimes gets lost in the ether or in the CEO's office or in that bureaucracy. And so there's some things that we can be doing to make sure that those directives are, you know, held in front of us and that we make sure that those are followed through. And so that's one of the ideas. You know, there is also criticism that the board's not doing strategic planning, that we're just reacting to, to what comes before us. And I think that we need to do strategic planning, especially with career and technical education and how it fits into economics, you know, the environment. We're trying to do something proactive with the Climate Action Group. And so I, but it's, it's difficult with the Brown Act and not being able to work on these issues except on those days that we're all together in the boardroom. And so, so I think that we need to have some extra days of board meetings, kind of like retreats or something, but in front of the, open to the public, where we just deal with strategic planning and looking at, you know, where we're going as far as our economy or environment or housing and some of these key issues that we have in our county. So, so that's, I think that's it. And the one other thing is that, you know, last week, the whole Harris Quarry issue came up to the board and I didn't know it was coming up until that Thursday before the meeting. And then I, I talked to the deputy county council and I said, "Hey, I have this, could, it's a potential conflict. I don't think, it's not a financial interest, but we live on Schaefer Ranch Road, so it's a couple of miles or a mile from, from the quarry. And I've also donated to, to keep the code. And so are those issues?" And so I said, "I don't have a financial interest in this." And through one thing and another, I didn't hear back until the morning, you know, 10 minutes before the meeting. And county council came to me and said, "We think you have a conflict and you need to recuse yourself." So, and it's not their fault, it was just a mix-up in communication. But what I learned from, so I recused myself that day. But what I learned from it was that I really need to, in a situation like that, go to my resources and my resources are the constituents of the 3rd District and seek out, you know, opinions from not just county council, but also the people that I represent. And so that's my commitment from now moving forward and my learning experience from that is to, you know, really look at it deeply beforehand and make sure it's not last minute and make sure that I'm doing what is right by the constituents and the people of this. Because it is a very controversial and yet people are very passionate about that issue. And so hopefully, I think that I can look at it clear-minded, you know, clear-eyed and everything and come up with the best decision, but I don't want to not represent the people. So that's my commitment moving forward. Okay? So with that, why don't we open it up? Yeah, Madge?
Okay. So you mentioned that in looking at emergency preparedness and especially up in the Brook Trails and Sherwood Road corridor, that you looked at the Mill Creek former walking trail that's been closed to the public for a long time? Is that, is there any feasibility to opening that up either as just a walking trail or as a potential evacuation route? And knowing that it is private property, we would have to, yeah, I'm just wondering if that's on the table?
Yes. Everyone heard the question? So the question is, can the Willets Creek Trail, the one that goes from North Brook up to Brook Trails, be used maybe as a possible walking trail or emergency access route? And/or? Well, we're just dealing with it as an emergency access route and we've had great positive participation from the three owners along that route. And they're all very cooperative. They realize that there's, you know, lives at stake. And so in those situations, they've given us permission to, to use that road as an emergency access. What we're looking at is trying to make sure that the road is in good enough condition that cars can go through it and/or fire trucks and everything, emergency vehicles go up it. So, so that's what we're looking at right now. And I've, Chris Neary has been helpful with getting the MOUs and he's working on getting MOUs with those three owners. He got the MOUs for, the MOUs are Memorandums of Understanding with, between those landowners and the county or the Brook Trails to say, "Hey, we can use, you know, we can use your land, do vegetation management to get the road up to a certain level." And, and they've been cooperative. Mike?
Hi. I've got a question regarding the emergency electrical power shutdowns. PG&E is gonna get a weather forecast for three or four days in advance and say, "Hey, this might happen." Then three or four hours, they might say, "Okay, the weather's gone bad, we're gonna turn the power off in an hour." They turn the power off, then the weather goes good, they say, "Okay, we can turn the power back on, but we've got to inspect all the lines and that's gonna take two days." What's PG&E's responsibility to consumers that have refrigerators full of bad food, grocery stores full of bad food, restaurants that have lost money because they can't be open? Is PG&E gonna make these businesses whole or is it just tough luck?
Yeah, I haven't heard that they're going to make anyone whole. That, but you know, we, that's a great question. And PG&E did a presentation to the city council. We're gonna get them to the Board of Supervisors, hopefully in July. But there's a lot of stuff going on with PG&E right now and the governor's coming up with this insurance plan. I just heard about on the radio and then there was talk in the office down at Yukaya this morning about it. And the deal is, is that, you know, they're trying to get PG&E not to shut off as much as they're threatening to shut off. We all wanna be safe and at the same time, you know, PG&E wants to, I mean, they've gone through bankruptcy, the Potter Valley Project, they said that they weren't going to renew that two days before they declared bankruptcy. And then I just heard this morning that Senator McGuire is trying to get them to, if they go along, to sign on to this insurance policy that Governor Newsom is proposing, then PG&E would have to pay $10 million towards getting the Potter Valley Project switched over to, to this entity that's forming to, to put in a bid. And the county is part of that bid and there's three other entities right now working on it.
Hi, Mark Herbert. Thank you. You've been representing your district in my mind very well and I appreciate your service.
Thanks.
Truly. The alternatives were not meritable. You spoke to the grand jury report about the board supervisors. And you spoke distinctly, kind of around Carmel Line General's irresponsibility.
I didn't say, no, no, I didn't say that.
What, I did.
Okay.
She, she makes over $275,000 a year of county expense plus benefits. So that's not just a mistake. A 41% increase in wage was granted to themselves last year before you came into office. And again, we're talking about communication. You're our supervisor and you're telling us today that you are kept in the dark about a possible conflict of interest on an issue that directly impacts your constituency in your district when you made, as a private citizen, a charitable contribution which in no way, shape or form would have colored your opinion. And I believe you were probably misled by county council. I wouldn't doubt it. So my question for you is, as constituents, when we advocate control of all of these issues to people who seat in seats like yourself, when and where are we gonna have responsible government that's costing, taxes are gonna go up again, July 1st? When are we gonna have responsible government?
Well, there are certainly huge salaries at the county level. And you know what the supervisors are making is, is a lot less than a lot of the department heads and certainly the CEO. As far as that decision with the Harris Quarry, county councils, they did try to contact me beforehand on that Monday afternoon, but I was walking in the hills of Brook Trails, you know, on those and I was out of touch until the next morning. And so, so on that level, you know, it was a conservative kind of approach to it and, you know, it was their advice. I took it at the time, but I don't need to follow it. What was the other part? Just about general.
Given that we're advocating our lives and livelihood, we've lost over 40 businesses in this community with countless jobs post-bypass. And with the incredibly shoddy overtaxation and regulation and interim this and that with cannabis, it's, it's been irresponsible governance for quite some time, at a time when we can all clearly see we need solid governance, especially on issues involving environmental things like the quarry and/or the bypass, a walking trail that's gonna cost millions of dollars. Again, where's our bank for the buck, I guess?
Well, on that level, I feel like the county bureaucracy has been very supportive of what I've been doing as far as getting emergency access routes, getting Cal Fire and other organizations to make sure that we're safer and prepared with vegetation management. They've been very helpful on all these levels. And so I feel like some of the issues that I care about, they're, they're really trying to be supportive of it.
This is about the Sherwood Road exits. I was wondering if the continuation of Sherwood Road all the way to Highway 101, if that could, I mean, it is supposedly the alternative route, emergency route, if anything happens to block 101. So I'm wondering if that can be made viable as an emergency exit. I mean, it's a dirt road, but I don't know in what shape it is or if that can be, if that would be something that you might push to get looked at. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Sherwood Fireways Council did a trip last fall and they caravaned up and they, they even had a person with a huge, like 40-foot RV. And they did the Sherwood Road all the way up to 101, going north. And they made it. And they're going to do another one to make sure that people know that they can drive it. And so they had high clearance vehicles, they had huge vehicles, they had low clearance vehicles and they all made it. They said that the road is in pretty good condition. What is happening is when you get out to Highway 101, then there's a kind of a blind turn on the north side. And so cars are coming by fast and it's, it wouldn't be safe if a lot of cars were trying to exit onto 101 and trying to get out as quickly as possible. And so I just, I went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Caltrans and all their top people and I, I connected with those people. Yesterday, I was communicating with one of them and saying that, and I talked to the sheriff's department too, that what are we gonna do about that situation? Okay? If there is an emergency, what do we do? Sheriff's Department seems to think that if we did vegetation management on that side north of the exit, then that would help out because people would be able to see for a long ways. And so then I contacted Caltrans, I said, "What's the deal here? Can you get this done?" They said, "Yeah, we'll send it." And so they're looking at it too. And so that's just one part. The other part is with the Office of Emergency Services, we're working, we're going to have a meeting of Cal Fire, CHP, the Little Lake and Brook Trails Fire Departments, the county transportation. transportation and looking at all of the emergency routes in this area, you know, Sherwood Road especially. And to make sure that we're doing, you know, we have plans in place if, if there is an emergency so that people are, you know, that there's flaggers out there or traffic control at the appropriate places and people know what to do. So, so we're going to have that meeting within a week or so.
Thanks for being here. I want to know, since we're talking about emergency exits, any talk, and I might have missed this, I came a little bit late, about Mier Mill and all the Black Hawk and Black Bard and Ridgewood people out there, they've just got that one route now. After that beautiful new bridge was built and then the weather took Mier Mill down. So is there talk about developing that or?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's an interesting situation where there is a landslide on Williams Ranch Road, right off of Mill, or Mier Mill Road and just like 100 yards up. And so it's blo, it's been blocking for the last couple of years. And, and we just got, I've been working with some of the people up there who live in Williams Ranch area and that's right at the dividing line between the third district and the fifth district. So Supervisor Williams and I have both been working to get a permit for, to do the road work necessary because it's right along the creek. And so planning and building just approved the permit or gave the word that the Fish and Wildlife, who are very interested in that situation too, that they know that the, the county is permitting it so that they can go get the permit from Fish and, CDFW, Fish and Wildlife to, to start the work. So even though it's private, they have to have the appropriate permits. And so we are working on it. And I think that we made some great progress within the last couple of weeks. Yeah, because it's important for hundreds of people, if they have to evacuate and especially if there's a fire coming from, you know, the Highway 101 side of, of Ridgewood area, then they need to all evacuate that way. Okay.
My issue is different. I go to the library frequently and I noticed that it's beginning to look really shoddy. So I went inside and asked if Gary Owen was still doing the landscaping and they said, no. That the funding for the landscaping for the library is supposed to come through the It's, it's really bad. There's one weed that is literally four feet tall and the trees are not pruned, the water system is broken. It needs care and attendance and it's not happening. And it's, people go to small towns. When I go to a small town, I go to the health food store, the library and look around. If that is representing our town, it's a really poor representation.
I have to add that all of the fences are down around the museum right next door to it too, been vandalized.
Okay, I'll check into that and see what we can do.
So many of these issues are important and have many aspects, but I, I just want to touch on some of the environmental considerations for some of these projects that seem to be ignored in the, in the frenzy to somehow avert disaster from fire, which is understandable. But for example, the Willets Creek Trail, I, I'm sorry to hear that they're only thinking about opening it for emergency purposes because it used to be one of Willet's finest assets, that lovely trail. It goes right alongside Willets Creek, which is a salmon and steelhead creek. And I would just hope that you, as our supervisor, would be a voice for ensuring that any proposal for improving ingress egress along that right of way would include a full environmental review of the impacts to such a thing on that precious resource of Willets Creek. So I guess I'll leave it at that. I mean, there are other environmental impacts to some of the other proposals, like even the, the Great Redwood Trail that goes through Willets along the railroad track, there are environmental implications there too, toxic implications that I don't think should be swept under the rug in the enthusiasm to go forward. So I hope and assume that you will be our strongest voice on the board in, in terms of environmental protection. You were that way in the campaign and you have been that way. And so I'm just urging you to, to not let that part of the equation get missed.
Yeah, and I think that with the Willets Creek Trail, which, I used to walk that trail when I was a kid because I lived in that Northbrook area and worked at the Brook Trails Lodge when it was a thriving little resort community. And so I used to walk that every day to be a busboy up there. But, but what we're looking at with the Willets Creek Trail is really just vegetation man, you know, chopping the weeds down and just going through with a, you know, just getting the brush so it's not that high and cars can go over it.
Hi, John.
Hi.
All right. On the subject of fires and evacuation, I'd like to just say that what we've learned from fires over the past three years that have claimed several lives, some if not all forms of communications, cell towers, telephone lines, electrical lines go down and compromise to the point of uselessness, first alert cellphone, landline or any other contact to all persons residences, alerting them to an immediate evacuation event. At the point in a fire, when this has occurred, it's indisputable that the only means of communicating that's left is, and will provide the need to persons to get out and to get out now and, and communicate that to everybody is by way of sirens. So the Sherwood Road Corridor has the highest population in a heavily forested area in the entire county and it's the most similar to Paradise where more than 80 people perished in horrendous ways last November 8th, which I would hope would make this area a priority for both a realistic evacuation alert as well as a realistic evacuation plan. My question, with the reality that fire sirens could be engineered, installed and online in approximately four to five months, what are the obstacles that you know of in the way of installing these very essential life-saving devices for the entirety of Brook Trails and the rest of the Sherwood Road Corridor? That's my first question. And my second question is, isn't it the job of our public officials to provide this safety net in a timely fashion, knowing what we now know can happen in a firestorm event?
Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, we've, we've talked quite a few times about that and I've had numerous conversations with the Office of Emergency Services, right? Trying to see where they are with it. You know, my understanding is that they've, they've got these grants, they're, they're buying these sirens, but they haven't been able to, to move forward with them yet. They're still doing the studies and everything because there's all these barriers to, you know, what if you live on the other side of the hill or, you know, some of those kind of barriers or if the power goes out, what's going to run them? You know, there's, there's some solar ideas and everything. But, you know, one of the best ideas I thought that, well, Steve Hansen had was to have a plane, if there's an emergency like that, have the plane or a helicopter fly over with the siren, you know, which would be able to cover a lot of area quickly. But, you know, you talked to Office of Emergency Services too, and I think that they were, they're considering it, so.
Okay, so as far as barriers, over the hill, you just put another siren that covers everybody. It's, it's not a problem. These sirens run on batteries, okay, for a solid half hour and they are trickle charged, the batteries are trickle charged so that they're already ready to go. So when everything else goes down, those batteries are there and supplying the power to the sirens. Yes, I've been in contact with Rick Ellert, we've gone back and forth with emails and at this point, he has gotten the okay for the helicopter to come out of Santa Rosa and respond. It'll take three to four hours for them to get that helicopter up and running and get it up here with the siren hanging off of it. So it's not going to, in a, in a situation like Paradise, as he mentioned, it probably isn't going to do the trick, but there are some occasions where it would work. And the way that I view it is only as an interim management program. It's the Civil Air Patrol who he got the okay from on this project. And so, and the last writing to me is, yes, he has gotten the okay to do that. But that's not going to work without other things being in play. Number one would be a viable evacuation plan. And I think the first step to a viable evacuation plan is you need to know how long it's going to take to get people out of Brook Trails. This was one of the leading problems in, I've got a quote here from the, in the City Engineer Paradise, that one of their main problems was they never did figure that out. They didn't realize how long it's going to take to get people out. And there's a software program out there that I've sent to Rick. Hopefully he'll use it that will help identify that situation. But as of yet, I'm wondering if we've even taken that first step. That's a first, very primary step that I think needs to be taken immediately to get things going in the direction of, you don't want a siren if there's no evacuation plan. And you can't have an evacuation plan unless you know how long it's going to take to get people out of the area. So it's, it's step one, step two, and I wonder if even step one has begun the process for that at this point.
Well, not to get too defensive on that or anything, but, but there are different ways of, of notifying people. And we have that NICSIL system, we have the Everbridge, and I think that, you know, Brook Trails, the Sherwood Firewise Council, the Pine Mountain Firewise Council have been very assertive in trying to get people to sign up for those. And I was just talking to Rick Ellert from the Office of Emergency Services this morning about, you know, creating a video to make sure that people know how to sign up for it, what they could expect if they're signed up and they get the, the notification and what they do once the notification happens. And so they're working on it. I've had like three conversations with them. The last one was this morning about getting that video so that we can put it on YouTube, we can put it on websites, we can show it at all the places around the county because he can't be everywhere. But people need to be informed about some of these basic emergency notifications.
What I'm talking about here is, that's good. Firewise is doing a good job with what they're doing, I think. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about what happens when, after Firewise Communications go down, which we know happens in almost every fire event. Then what? You can have everything in place that you want to, but if you don't have that means to communicate it to people, it's not going to work. So that's, that's where I'm coming from on this. What do you do at that point? And if somebody's got a better idea than sirens as far as saturation, let me know, but I can't think of anything better. And it's important to think beyond that point. When all communications go down, what, that's when people die. Well, what do you do? That's what I'm talking about. And I'm, I'm happy that these other things are happening. You know, not everybody has a cellphone. I for one don't. Not everybody has all these other things, but it doesn't matter what I have or what I don't have. When the power is out or the cell towers are down, there's no way to communicate. And so that's the importance, I think, of the sirens. And that's where I'm coming from on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And keep, keep being the squeaky wheel on that.
I think my concern has already been addressed. However, you were talking about they made it to Highway 101. Well, I think most people have driven that road as well as we have, just for concern purposes, but it is a slow go. So in their studies, I would hope if someone else suggested that they might have time on, you know, in the circumstances of getting from point A to point B. If you have a procession of, of cars, five miles an hour or two miles an hour or whatever it is, we need to know where our choices are. If it's going to take me 45 minutes to an hour to get to Highway 101 versus Highway 20, you know, 25 minutes, I would want to know that. So I think someone had already suggested that in their studies, they're trying to figure out how long it's going to take. Not that you can ever say because, you know, if somebody could break down, have an accident, any variable, but that was just what I was asking.
And my understanding is that if this catastrophic event happens, then the sheriff is going to make those determinations. And he's going to tell people which way they're going. And you need to just believe that the sheriff has the plan. What we're doing with, in the county level, is we're trying to get all those entities together to make sure that they understand what the options are, that, that they know that, you know, when we get that Willets Creek Trail, that that's an option to put fire trucks up into Brook Trails or the Furco Road, you know, so, so we, so everyone's on the same page. Because what we've seen so far is that some of these CAL FIRE or the Brook Trails Fire Department or Little Lake, you know, they're, they're doing great what they're doing, but there's sometimes the communication between the different entities isn't as great as it could be.
I am speaking for another person at this time who is a worker for In-Home Support Services and she was told that the Board of Supervisors make all the decisions with regard to that. The program itself is extremely poorly run and this particular woman put in her hours and was not paid for it. She has gone through every step that she could take and was told basically there weren't funds. Now what happened was, In-Home Support Services made a mistake. They sent out the number of hours she was supposed to work, so she worked those hours. After those hours were worked, the time was changed and they said they made a mistake, they never should have sent out the first paperwork. She never should have got it. Nonetheless, she did get it. She did work those hours and they were refusing to pay her. She's gone to payroll, she's gone to the social worker, she's gone to everyone she could get. Now, if the supervisors are in charge of this, y'all need to do something about it.
Right. It's a tricky system and I'm totally in support of the In-Home Health Support Services because they're vital links in our community for people who otherwise would end up in a home, you know, a residential treatment facility or something where we don't have enough beds. And so to keep people in their houses, in their homes is critical. And so these people are doing just this incredible job for like right above minimum wage. And, but the only role that the supervisors have is that we can say their pay can go up. And I'm certainly in support of that. But there's, there's a lot of issues because actually the state of California is paying them. Their time cards go to Chico and it's, you know, there is some oversight at the county level in the Health and Human Services Department and I can check on it, but it's not really a county program, it's a state program. And the, the employer of these people, the, the workers, the In-Home Health Support Service workers are the, the recipient themselves. So they're the clients or, the client is the employer of these people. The county just runs. The county just runs what the state is doing. And so it's a complicated mishmash of different entities. But I can check into anything that, of this sort. But I've heard stories about people where the client gets mad at the person and says, "I'm not going to sign your timesheet." Those kind of stories happen. And it's all paid out of the state. And they have a very good union. And I totally support their union. I am very supported by them. And we have a close working relationship. And so if they can just get in touch with me or SEIU 2015, that'd be great.
Congratulations on your becoming a supervisor. I thought that was just great. My name is Tom Busky and I live on the Ridgewood Ranch. I know it's not your district, but I do have two questions I think perhaps you could help me with. One is, I read the comments in the Willets Weekly, not this one, but the one last week where it explained what was going on. And I wanted to ask if you have any more information since that time? And secondly, do you know when the public meeting is going to be held on that proposed asphalt at the quarry?
No, I don't know anything more than what was, what happened at the board meeting. And I think the Willets Weekly reported on that pretty extensively. And I don't know when it's coming back.
Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-up on what you mentioned about Williams Ranch Road. What, it is on private property. The county is supportive of a permit to reestablish that road that washed out. But how is it going to get funded? And I also wanted to second what Ellen said about there are environmental concerns with that road too. But clearly, there needs to be an alternative route for all the people that live up there. So how would that project be able to go forward?
Well, the county's role was to issue the permit.
Permit to do the road.
To do the work. And because it's a private road, that the, for them to do the work, they're going to have to come up with the funds. The county doesn't have money, can't use that money in that situation. So hopefully, they're working on it. And they've had an issue with, I'll just say, there's, it's a complicated issue for them. And the neighbors need to all be willing to go in and try to make it right.
I got a question. Relative to Harris Quarry and also the Griss Creek gravel extraction business, county has run into a lot of problems with trying to make special industrial overlay zones in these areas which are not, at least in the case of Harris Quarry, it's not industrial. But it just seems like we keep running into huge problems with people who are living out near these industrial sites. And I'm wondering if you would be supportive of, or have you thought about changing the zoning on some of these industrial areas that are close, you know, where there's a lot of people living around them? Because it just seems like, you know, people are going to continue to fight to try to keep asphalt plants out of their backyard or gravel extraction operations that are also producing asphalt out of their backyards. It just seems like really poor planning on a fundamental level to put those things out where people are living. So have you, could you comment on that? Do you have any plan to remedy that sort of a fundamental bad zoning?
Yeah, I think it goes to the general plan and how that's developed. And if people are really involved in coming up with the general plan and making sure that we don't have those really weird situations, you know, no one wants an asphalt plant in their backyard, you know. And when we come up with a general plan, then we should follow it, not keep creating exemptions for special circumstances. And certainly in Griss Creek, that's where they got into the problem, where, you know, it created a bad situation where the county got sued and they lost. And we lost over $200,000 on that. So I'd say, make a good general plan and adhere to it.
Speaking of the general plan, I noticed that the county has hired a contractor for $85,000 to update the housing element of the county's general plan. Question one, don't we have anybody in the planning department that can update the housing element of the general plan? Why do we have to hire a contractor for $85,000 to do what it seems like any qualified planner ought to be able to do? And number two, I think a general plan update is due and would be great. And I would, and I think we said this in the campaign, it really needs to involve citizens all over the county to be engaged in updating the county's general plan like it was done in the '70s. And I think this idea of contracting out either for pieces of it or the whole thing is a bad idea. So anyway, I have a two-part question. What's with the $85,000 to do something that any planner ought to be able to do? And two, do you support a general plan update that engages the citizenry of all the districts?
Yeah, my understanding is with that $85,000 for the general, or the housing element, is that they needed to do it because they didn't have a person in-house and that these people are experts. Willets, the city of Willets used them for their housing element. And so they keep saying, "We can't do it. We don't have the people, so we need to bring in these experts to do the housing element." And if they don't do the housing element, then they're going to lose. The state of California is going to come down on them big time. And so it was kind of like we were forced to approve it. And that's, so they say they don't have the people to do it in-house. No, I totally agree that, you know, when they redo the general plan, that they should have wide cooperation from, you know, people in Covelo are even clamoring to be part of it. And so I certainly would support all that. At the last board meeting, I did not support spending $85,000 for a consultant to look at the seven parks that we have in the county. And they wanted to do that to look at the state of the parks, like Low Gap Park, Mill Creek Park. Then there's none in the third district. And for me, it just seems like, talk about, shouldn't we be able to do that ourselves? Seems like a person can walk through, you know, the Redwood Valley Park that's down there. You know, you can walk through it in half an hour and you can probably see what some of the issues are. And to spend $85,000 to do a study like that was just, I didn't think that we needed to do that. So I voted no on it. And I think it was a three to two vote and it got passed.
Hi. I'm curious about different, I know parts of Sonoma County and other counties and other areas around here are supporting the public banking bill that's going through the, well, it's going into the Senate now. It's passed the Assembly. And I was wondering how you feel about it and if there's anything that you feel we can do to help make that go through.
Yeah, what Beth is talking about is this AB 857, which I was just doing some work on it yesterday. I called up Senator McGuire's office because it passed this Assembly and it's, gives local jurisdictions the ability to create public banks. And I've said all along that we need public banking, especially for the cannabis industry, to be able to get the money out of their homes and into a place where it's safe and creates safer communities that way. And so, but we can also use that money. You know, if we have a public bank, we don't have to be putting our county money, which, you know, there's $280 million in the treasurer's account, which goes into Wells Fargo or Chase or wherever they're investing it. And it could go into a public bank which could be used for low-interest loans, for infrastructure, for housing, for education and some of those things. So I totally support this bill. I called up Senator McGuire to see what we could do as a county to support that. And so I'm working on that and I totally support it. And if it were to happen, it would probably be a JPA with Sonoma County, Humboldt County and Mendocino County because what I've heard is that Mendocino County's not big enough to do it ourselves. And so it'd have to be a bigger-than-us JPA. So we'll see what happens with the state senate.
John, I have a question. The term conflict of interest has come up earlier tonight. And currently, the CEO of the county is also the clerk of the board. And I see that as a conflict of interest. And I wonder what your feeling is about that individually and whether or not the board collectively sees that as an issue that needs to be addressed.
It hasn't been brought up on the board level, so I don't know what the board in general, the majority, feel because we haven't discussed it. I have discussed it with another supervisor. And I think that there's potential for conflict there. And, but I think that what happens also when we talk about the grand jury report and some of the structural problems that I was talking about at the very beginning, is that, you know, one of the structural problems that I see is that the supervisors don't have any dedicated clerical or, you know, analytical support. And so if we get an idea, if I have an idea about doing something, it's on me or I have to go to individuals in the public to say, "Hey, can you work on this? And can you do this investigation?" And I see people who've done that for me. And they come back and they say, "Oh, this is what I found out." And that's not, you know, it's a great way to get people to work together and feel connected to the government. But at the same time, I think that structurally, there should be someone there, not just clerks or deputy clerks or deputy deputy clerks, you know, who are accountable to the clerk who is the CEO. If there was a structure where we could be, we'd have our own clerical or administrative staff who could be doing some things. And it could just be one or two people for all five supervisors. I think that's a way to make a more effective democratic system.
I have a question, John. Two questions, sorry. One is, is anything happening about the Navy sonar bombing, loud noise things? I know they wanted a permit for, like, a long time, years and years and years and years they were applying for a permit. Has, do, did we have any effect on stopping that?
Well, anyone who went over to the Fort Bragg hearing that the Navy had realizes it was just a fiasco. And instead of having one person input like what we're doing right now, they had tables set up all around the room. And so you couldn't hear what anyone else was saying. And so all of a sudden, people would go to one area, to one table, and make their comments, but they didn't have any microphone. Nothing was set up like that. And so no one could hear anything. And it was a mess. And so people were upset because the process wasn't really proper. I was able to deliver the letter of support or protest against the sonar testing that the Board of Supervisors approved. And I delivered it to them. But as far as ongoing, you know, they, people were trying to get the Navy to come back and do a real kind of town hall. But the Navy, last I heard, that they weren't going to do it. So I don't know, you know, it's a long process and we'll see what happens.
That's a tactic that Caltrans used also to put stations up in the past when we were protesting the bypass. It's a divide and conquer tactic. My second question is about the museum, our poor little struggling museum that was five years ago struggling because of mismanagement. But it's only gone downhill from then, you know. Initially, when the museum started, it had a paid staff of eight. And now, when Herb Pruitt was the first museum director, some of you know Herb. And now it has three people. And they have rid the museum of the longest-lasting employee that was there that had a huge body of knowledge of how to do school tours and how to do the PR to schools and get kids in and do all these special events, the ranch tours and stuff. And I'm just really concerned about the museum and the, you know, as the museum salaries for its two or three employees plummets, you know, the staff number plummets, you know, Carmel Angelo's executive branch wages and salary raise and rise and rise, you know. And I know that, you know, when Karen Horner, who was our acting director for a while before we got a program director, was giving four hours a week attention to the museum, to a museum that desperately needed a director and staff to complete their tasks and to create their events. And I'm really concerned because I love the museum. I hate to drive by it and see all of the little fences kicked down. It's just not being attended to.
Well, on that, you know, there was a proposal to close the museum on Sundays. And that was on the consent calendar for the board. And so when I pulled it, it created a ruckus. And fortunately, I was supported by the Willet City Council and people. And so they came up with a compromise of keeping it open four hours a day on Saturday and Sunday. So we kept it open. You know, there is that exhibit this weekend, starting the Dusty Whitney collection. And it's over 1,600 memorabilia things from Willet's Frontier days that that's going to be. So, and they were...
It's all of Mendocino County. His museum was three stories. It was, it's all of Mendocino County. He has stuff from, you know, Grace Hudson photographs and things like that. It's not just Frontier Days. It's a huge, wonderful collection.
And to the museum's credit, that they were open on Tuesday, which is not a normal day that they're supposed to be open, but they did open it because of the Great Race. And so they are trying to accommodate some of the big events that are going on too, so.
Measure B, the Mental Health Initiative, I believe, was passed by...
Measure B, the mental health initiative, I believe, was passed by the voters two years ago in June. So we're two years into it. The voters approved levying a half cent tax to be used toward facility, mental health facilities and services. I'm wondering if you could give us an update on where we are with that and whether or not the old Howard Hospital is being considered as a potential site.
Yeah, good questions. That where we are with Measure B, and I just met with Jed Diamond this morning. And so we were talking about where we are and with it, because he's the third district representative on the Measure B committee. And so what happens is with Measure B, there's the committee of 11 people who are supposed to be looking at everything and then recommending to the Board of Supervisors what should be done with the money. And it's accumulating at almost a million dollars every two months. Is that right? And the money is kept in a separate fund. And and so anyway, yeah, they've been meeting for like a year and a half. And say, four months ago, they they didn't have anything. I went to one of their meetings and it was interesting because they were kind of stuck on where to move forward. And so being the school teacher, I just said, okay, look, what's your number one priority? You know, just tell us what your number one, top choice would be if we were to do this. And so they said, oh, okay, we'll do that. And so they went around the room and everyone said, oh, my top choice is the PUF unit or my top choice is the Crisis Residential Treatment Facility. And so when they did that, they were able to come up with their top three choices. And from that, they recommended that to the board. Their top three was the PUF, the Crisis Residential Treatment Center, and then the Crisis Stabilization Unit. So so they came up with those three, they recommended it to the board, the board approved the that recommendation. And so that's what the focus is supposed to be on for the Measure B money right now as far as facilities. And then about a month or two later, they said, okay, we need a program manager. So they recommended it to the board, the board approved hiring a program manager to kind of look at, you know, how they're going to to make the selection, to give the, you know, options and say, oh, it's going to cost this amount of money for Old Howard Hospital or this amount for the Orchard Street down in Ukiah or, you know, we need to, if we are to have a unit on the coast. So so the program manager is being hired. They're, they've flown the position, they're trying to find a person to fill it. And and with that, they're looking, we're going to look at, you know, what the options are. And I believe that Old Howard is still on the, you know, the drawing board. It's one of two or three options. And so so it's a question of if it's really viable and how much it would cost and and do the people of Willetts want it? And and so that's where we are with it. Does that answer the question enough?
John, I have a question since nobody else does. Come on, guys. The rails to trails, are they planning to take the rails out of the railroad to make the trail? Or are they going to make the trail alongside the rails? Because we have the possibility, I know we can't go north railroad wise, but we do, you know, it would be great to get on a train in Willetts and ride down to Railroad Square in Santa Rosa and go shopping and get on. I came from Chicago and I rode the L all over the place, you know. And I I I would love to see a southbound passenger railroad come. And it's not going to come up here if we pull up the rails. Can you talk to that?
Yeah, they're they're going to do these studies and and come up with the best plan for each area of the trail or for the railroad. You know, we want to keep that area from Willetts South open for railroad. And so some of the areas, they will be building on top of the railroad, the rails. On some, they'll have to pull up the rails. And on some, they'll build beside the rail. And so it's just a matter of, you know, looking at every mile or so of this. It's not going to be one, one thing for everything.
You know, there there was a plan, RJ, you know, had this idea of having the trails alongside the railroad in the Willetts Valley and and on the rails putting old street cars, you know, and having a crosstown transportation on street cars like we did in the old days, you know. And we can't do that if the rails are all pulled up.
Right. Well, Janice and I just rode on the rail bikes over in Fort Bragg. And that was a great, you know, it, every rail bike they had was full. So they were making some money. And it went out a few miles to where the the tunnel has collapsed. And then they turn around the bikes and get back on, and they all have little E, electric chargers on them. So if you start to tire out a little bit, you know, and towards the end of the trip, we were turning up that volume a little bit more each time.
Can we do that here in Willetts?
And so I just saw this RJ Penoli, this guy who owns the Skunk Train line or the Robert, yeah, he, I saw him Saturday and I said, hey, that is, you know, what's happening in Fort Bragg is really wonderful. And why can't you do it in Willetts? And and he said, yeah, we're trying, we're working on it. And, you know, I think that that would be great to go out the Skunk Train line or, you know, start at the top and maybe go down to North Spur and all that. And so so they are looking at some of those things. And I think that, you know, wouldn't it be great to go from Willetts to Ukiah on a rail bike?
The other thing is about the railroad is they need, you know, the chain link fence around our beautiful historic preservation noted railroad station is so off putting to guess to have that cyclone fencing there and to have the derelict cars out in the, why don't they, they don't store them over in Fort Bragg, why do they store them here? They said the reason for the chain link fence was that they had people breaking in that were sleeping in the cars and calling fi- causing fires. And I suggested, well, there are a couple unemployed people here in Willetts that might like a nighttime security job, you know. But it's so off putting to have the cyclone fence around the railroad station. It's a beautiful building.
Just a a little bit of an update. The city of Willetts received a one point, no, it was more than that, a $6 million grant for a 1.6 mile section of a trail with the rails that's going to go from, I think, from the high school to the hospital alongside the rails. And so it doesn't pull up the rails and it provides a really good walkable and I think bikeable path. It's going to take quite a few years before it actually is completed. But it is starting this year with environmental studies and it's a grant funding. We were, we were really thrilled to get this. It's like the smallest city that ever got this kind of a grant. So it was very exciting and it, so it's going to be one leg of the Great Redwood Trail eventually.
Hi, I have a question that is a California question, but of course ties into our locality. I'd been hearing a few years ago about a California wide earthquake warning system, such as they used in Mexico City to give people, I think it was something like 30 seconds warning before a large earthquake happened. And it ended up saving so many lives because people had just that short bit of warning and could get out of buildings. Have you heard of anything, how that might affect us here locally?
Yeah, I haven't heard that.
Be interesting to learn more about that.
We'll get Mike McGuire up here.
Cool. Thank you.
Hi again, John. So logging issues. One of the things that caught my eye on your brochure when you were running was the line that said, we protect our natural resources. So just initially, my question would be, in that purview, would that include logging on private lands? Does that come within your jurisdiction? Oh, I'm asking that, run a little more on that. Maybe I'm the only one that's noticed the pile of logs that the mountain of thousands of trees laying the wrong way down in Ukiah that have been logged, as well as another logging decks around the county. Tens and thousands of our trees over the past several years have been taken out. And also, you can't drive from here to Ukiah without noticing several logging trucks loaded with redwoods. Okay? You can sit down at the Chevron. I counted the other day, at one every eight minutes was coming through with a load. Okay, so my concern is I'm afraid that there's some level of deforestation going on in our redwood forests. And I would like to know if you have any information other than from stakeholders as to what the state of our redwood forests are with regard to logging practices. And, you know, the standard, the standard line from the logging industry is that trees are growing faster than they're being logged. But I've never heard about any science behind that statement. And I'm just wondering if it isn't time to get some science out into the woods on these private logging endeavors, find out what's really going on with our environment there and to make sure that outside of the stakeholder realm, that we get some real information as to what's what's going on. Because I think it'd be a good idea so that we don't wake up with the bad news someday, you know, that our, the bulk of our redwood forests have been depleted and it's too late. And the other thing is, I'd like an update on the hack and squirt initiative, where that stands.
Yeah, great. You know, most of that, the logging questions are, you know, state Department of Forestry. But my, you know, Richard Wilson, who was the head of the California Department of Forestry, he lives up in Covelo, and I talked to him quite a bit. And he, he says that, you know, they can say that the growth level is exceeding the cut level, but the reason is because there's so many small trees and the small trees grow fast, but they're cutting them down, you know. So it's not a healthy forest, even though it could be growing faster than the cut rate. And that's, that's Richard Wilson's point of view. And so he knows what he's talking about. To a, yeah. With the hack and squirt, that's a great question. You know, the hack and squirt issue is where, you know, some of the lumber companies are cutting the trees and I guess they go and slash them a little bit. And then they put in a herbicide which will kill the tan oaks. And they want to kill the tan oaks to, so that the redwoods can grow. And so just, there's thousands of gallons of the herbicides being used in the forest. And Measure V, which was to stop that, passed by, what, 62% of the people voted to stop that. Well, then, the Board of Supervisors, because they were threatened with a lawsuit by Mendocino Redwood Company and some others, that they decided to send it, because there's a, because it's governed by the state of California, the Board of Supervisors decided to send it to the state attorney general for an opinion. And it's been there for over two years. And so, so I propose that we send a letter to the state attorney general and the board pass that unanimously that we're kind of requesting an opinion. Well, that happened a few months ago, I think in April. And Supervisor Williams and I were in Sacramento for a new supervisor training. And when we were there, we, we found out where the attorney general was going to be. And and so we went to that meeting where he was. We stood outside and then he actually, they let us in. We went in and at the end of the meeting, we went out to him, we presented it to him and said, we really want this issue resolved. And so he said, okay, thank you. Gave it to his staff person. And so we came back, then we heard that they were going to give a ruling within 30 days, we heard 60 days. And so I brought it up again at a board meeting a couple weeks ago. And I said, this is getting ridiculous, you know, and and we need a ruling. And so, so the board at that time said, well, let's have our county council call them again. So I just checked in this morning with county council. I said, okay, what have you heard? What's the latest? And she said that they had called, but they didn't want to respond because it had gone to the supervisor level. They didn't want to respond to the county council. So now it's between the supervisors and the attorney generals. And they say that they're going to come up with a ruling soon. Okay. So what we're going to do is, I'll probably sponsor an agenda item at one of the coming board meetings to say, look, we need to, we need to, you know, give them 30 days or something, you know. And and at that point, then we need to make a decision. But the the tricky part is if we, if we made a decision and said, this is what we're going, we're going to implement Measure V, then M R or whatever entity could sue us. And once the suit starts, then whatever the attorney general says or has in their docket, they're going to stop. And they won't release it because there's a, if there's a pending, you know, suit.
Well, they haven't released it yet.
They haven't released it. So it's kind of one of those decisions that we're going to have to make as a board about, do we want to just go forward with it or wait forever for the attorney general's opinion? So.
So what's the possibility of getting a neutral eye out in the woods and in these logging expeditions and to see what's, make sure everything's on the up and up? Is there any possibility of that?
Well, I don't think the county
Other than stakeholders, other than, you know, forestry or Cal Fire, and no stakeholders, you know, somebody who's going to go in with as a neutral body and and look at what's going on. Is there, is there any possibility of that?
Well, with the, you know, the the entities, the companies that are doing the hack and squirt, they have to report to the county. And the county knows exactly, you know, how many gallons of this, these pesticides they're using.
I mean, even beyond hack and squirt, I mean, just the logging in itself and the amount of trees that are being extracted from our redwood forests, even though they're on public, private lands. Is there any way of overseeing that with a neutral body?
I don't know. Ellen might know.
There are people in this county who have followed county forest practices intimately for decades. And I would, I would go to them and find out, you know, what, how do we find out just what your question is? What is the real ecological condition of our private forest lands?
Right, essentially, I'm talking boots on the ground here and and not just taking the word of a public entity that has a stake in it.
Just a comment on the Measure V, sitting on the books with, you know, 63% of the votes in favor of it for two and a half years. And for the last two years, I don't remember now offhand the number of hundreds and hundreds, maybe thousands of gallons of herbicides that have been continued to be sprayed and hacked and squirt in our forests since the passage of Measure and squirt in our forests since the passage of Measure V. So it's like trying to close the barn door after most of the horses have already gone out. And all of this because the AG is sitting there and not giving us an opinion in the meantime. And so the lack of an, of an opinion is basically meaning we're not getting the public policy we voted for. So my feeling is if the AG has stalled again, which they did since your April direct meeting with them and a unanimous letter from the Board of Supervisors saying they want that opinion, that it's time for the board to bite the bullet and say, we're going to implement the measure that was passed by the voters. And if we get sued, then so be it. But, you know, this is really unconscionable. And, and talk about fire hazard, that's one of the, that is the main focus of Measure V, is that all of those dead trees are an enormous fire hazard. And if and when they burn, they are going to outgas all this herbicide. So it's, it's just time to get on with it. Judy's comment is that the firefighters have also expressed that they're concerned to try to fight a fire when they are going to be exposed to this herbicide smoke. And all of that is, even if there's not a fire, the herbicide is going into the groundwater and going into the runoff. And so it's, it's just time to get on with it. That's editorial comment.
This reminds me sort of why I never wanted to be a volunteer firefighter. Because as a volunteer, it means in theory, you can withdraw your services some of the time. Of course, when you're a volunteer firefighter, you never want to do that is the whole point. It's the one time you don't ever want to withdraw that. So what I was a little concerned about is as we continue to not go forward on the herbicide issue, and we don't really have solid studies that we can say here in the United States, this is the way the United States deals with herbicides and other sides for people's health. Would they probably just go ahead and essentially deputize their existing volunteer firefighters if there was an ongoing fire to make sure the fire was fought? I mean, would we have enough firefighters potentially if some of them decided to leave or not show up or whatever a volunteer does if there was not actually, you know, any idea about what was going on with the fire and the effect of the herbicides?
Well, I think a lot of the, the fighting of these fires is by Cal Fire. And so they aren't volunteers.
Okay. On, on the subject of herbicides and such and poisoning trees, a couple of things, well, maybe several things. Forests are interrelated system. Killing one species to supposedly make the other species grow faster, very likely has the opposite effect. They're all interrelated. They transfer resources back and forth between each other through the myceline network. The ones that leaf out early in the spring feed the ones that are still dormant. In the fall, the reverse goes on, you know, killing off one species in a forest, really dumb idea. Another really dumb idea is our culture's propensity to immediately go to kill what we don't want instead of supporting what we do. And this county is in a unique position here. We are headwaters of two major river systems. We have a responsibility to make sure that we are not poisoning our neighbors downstream. We should be working on a total, say, 25 year moratorium on all poisons within our county. Okay? We've laid the groundwork already. In 2014, we put in place law that says, we have asserted our fundamental right to clean water, air, and soil. Okay? We can build on that. I'm not quite sure why the people that did the hack and squirts did not do, build on that. We would not be in this position now. This idea that, well, okay, forest is the state and blah, blah, blah. You know, we bow down to the county, the county bows down to the state, and the state bows down to the feds, and the beds bow down to the Supreme Court. That is upside down. This country is founded on the principle of for and by the people. We need to start making new law that works for our community. It's called community rights. We can get another democracy school in here. We can put together another ordinance. We can get it on the ballot. We can get it passed. We could just wipe out all the poisons, start there. This is your forward thinking stuff, you know?
Yeah.
You know, we can continue on with the same framework we've been using all these years that was carefully designed to make sure that money when power stays in power. And even if it kills us, or we can make fundamental changes. Start passing rights based ordinances is a fundamental change. That's turning on its head. Let's say the people are on top, the rest do what we tell them to do. Think about that.
Well, I certainly wish the people of Mendocino County in the third district could determine what's going on for our country. I think we'd be a lot better off.
I, I have a question related to this. It's related to this whole discussion. And it's about glyphosate, the active ingredient in Roundup. And there's been talk about the county addressing this issue. And like so many things, the county moves at snail pace. And I'm wondering if Willets, if, if we're able to pass an ordinance for Willets to ban something like this, or are we, are we beholden to the county and their leader, leadership, I say a little skeptically?
No, Madge might tell you what's happening at the city level with glyphicides and herbicides. And then I'll tell you what I've been doing at the county.
The, the good news is that the city is committed to not using any herbicides on city properties. So that's a good step in the right direction. I can assure you, however, that the city movers and shakers, with myself excluded, would not likely try to take on banning glyphosate for private use or for sale in the stores, for example. That would be revolutionary to do it. They would, you know, it would be immediately a subject of a lawsuit. And the city is going to cower, as Tim pointed out, we're going to say, well, we can't do that. So I, I think we should push in that direction. But at least we have gone so far as to not allow it in the city's own properties. And I believe the county may have a similar policy, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I've been checking into this lately. And the county has a policy of not using it on the roadways. So, and, and then with the county buildings and all the infrastructure, that they aren't using it, they haven't been using it for quite a few years. But I was checking on it because Sonoma County just did a ban on glyphicides and any kind of synthetic herbicides and pesticides. And that was sponsored by Supervisor Will, or Supervisor Hopkins in Sonoma County. And she's an organic farmer is her background. And so I called her office and talked to one of the staff people that she has. And they sent me the, the resolution that they got passed in Sonoma County to ban all of synthetic herbicides, pesticides. And so I'm looking at it. I'm trying to figure out how to use it in Mendocino County. And, and so that's where we are with it. But if I had staff people to really rework it quickly, I, we could move faster.
That would be great.
Okay. I will.
Yes. I, I have a, pardon my ignorance, but I have a question and it's a comment. Isn't that what Measure S alluded to, Tim, what you're talking about? And we, and that is Measure S, but we voted for it. So why isn't the, why isn't the Board of Supervisors honoring Measure S? Because this covers all of that? Okay. We'd have to build off, okay. So I hope we do build off of Measure S, which gets us, which bans fracking.
Okay. Well, it's, see, it, it's all about how it's done. Okay? We asserted our fundamental right to clean water and, or soil. Ban fracking is a violation of those rights. But the key pieces of this community rights ordinance was the paragraphs in there that said, and I'm slightly paraphrasing, any county, state, federal, or international treaty that is counter to this ordinance is null and void here. Okay? That's the people taking back their power. Okay? That's, that's of for and by the people. This is the real thing here. So if somebody wanted to frac, well, part of the ordinance says, we can hold the corporate borders of redwood personally liable. Okay? There's no corporate shield there. That's way powerful, right? If they come in and sue us, they basically have to come in and say, no, I'm sorry, in your community, you don't get to decide what happens in your community. Who we do? How's that going to feel? Well, that's the reality today, but now it's in the open. Okay? That's the game changer. It brings what's the reality of today in the open. As a community, we get to decide what happens here. Now, when you say, John needs to do something about it, he can't. He's in the system that will not allow him to. The county council will say, oh, no, you can't do that. Okay? We, the people, have to be doing these things. Now, he could get creative. The people could put together an ordinance and they could fast track it onto the ballot. There's things that can be done, but we're going to have to get out of our chairs and do it. Because the existing legal infrastructure will not. It's working absolutely perfect for the people it was designed to serve. And that was not us.
Right. Last question.
I'm going to go way back to the beginning and, and your comments about continued education and technical education. And I just want to say that my son was a June graduate of Willets High School and he got the benefit of a kind of special circumstance program at Willets High School that allowed him in the second trimester to dual enroll at Mendocino College and take the Wildland Firefighter Academy, which is a 180 hour academy that makes him eligible to go straight to work for Cal Fire. Or in his case, he graduated from high school on June 6th and started his job with Oregon Department of Fire on June 11th. And so he wouldn't be in that, that position without the people at Willets High being willing to look outside of the box a little bit and give him an opportunity to earn credit for his college class that went to his graduation. And I know from my family personally, my son specifically, that was a best case scenario for him. He wasn't a four year university kind of kid. So I think the more that we can allow kids that opportunity to get to something that they're passionate about without feeling like they necessarily have to go through continued education to get there, that there's a whole group of kids that that's a really good fit for. So please keep looking at that and go in that direction because it, it was successful for my family.
Right on. And what I want you to do is when I bring up something at the Board of Supervisors, I want you to come and speak to it. And I'll let you know because you're great and that's a great story. All right, well, I want to thank all of you for spending these couple hours here.
Thank you so much for listening to all of our concerns. In the grand jury's report, they, they recommended that all the towns in our county have these town hall meetings. And we, in fact, organized this before that report came out. So, and our next town hall meeting is scheduled for October. So I hope you'll be back.
And I just wanted to say before we leave that you can always contact me at hashtag j at mendocino county.org. That's H A S C H A K J at mendocino county.org. Or my phone number is 707-972-4214. It's 972-4214. So anyway, if you have any concerns, issues, you know, feel free to call me, email, whatever. Stop me at the grocery store. Okay? Oh, I didn't mean to say that. Anyway, thanks for coming out. Okay.